Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. And I'd just like to call this a regular meeting of the Town Council to order. For the time, for the official time is 6:31. If you'll call roll, please.
Mayor Veroni?
Present.
Councilmember Conchi?
Present.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
And Councilmember Landgraf?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Peralta, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Everybody would stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still remain standing, please, for just a moment of silence for those in our community that have afflictions and need that little special boost to get over that hump. Thank you. Counselors, approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Ayes having, motion carries, who go on to the...
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, council and audience. I would like to adjust that agenda.
Okay, good.
In matters from the mayor or council and youth council member, item 11E, landlocked properties adjacent to the airport. Because there are a number of people from the audience here tonight, I would like to see if we could move that up right after 9A, out of consideration for those citizens.
So it can make that 9B?
Yes, sir.
But if we then, we need a...
I amend my motion.
We have amend the motion, we have a friend second to that amendment. I guess you seconded it?
Okay.
Okay. So then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 So we'll go ahead and amend the agenda to that. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. February 25th, 2014, regular minute, meeting minutes. Council?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote. Nope? Do we need to do that?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 So we'll go ahead and move on to the March 5th, 2014, canvases swearing-in meeting. Counselors?
Vote for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes having, motion carries. So move on to the awards and recognition, recognition of Taos High School wrestling team. Just want to take this opportunity to, I'm gonna turn the time over to Michael Landgraf here in just a second, but I just wanna thank the wrestling team, thank the families. It's just a wonderful honor to be able to honor you guys. It's not always that a wrestling team takes district as a team. Usually, there's a lot of individuals, but, you know, it really shows that the teamwork really helps, really gets the team going, really pulls it together as a team. You guys did awesome. Then you actually sent people into, you all went to state, participated in the state. And I know what it takes. I know a lot of you guys are cutting weight. A lot of you guys, you know, your families were behind you because it takes that special family bond, that special family to actually make sure that you stay on weight. I know the coaches, a lot of times, are, are they gonna make it today? I hope they make it today. They're pounded over when they left practice. Are they gonna splurge that last, you know, time? So I wanna turn the time over. Counselors, I don't know if you have any remarks, but I'd like to turn the, I'd like to step down and kinda turn it over to Michael Landgraf. And if we will, after, maybe we can step down here and be able to take them as they come by. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to, one of our airport staff members let me know that it was one of his son that took fourth place in state as a freshman. So congratulations to your son and congratulations to your family, too, Eric.
Go ahead, Michael. Counselors, if we'll step around to the side here as he does in presentation, and then maybe we can honor him as they come up.
You know, it's been a great year for the Tigers, and this just further proves that. You guys have done a wonderful job. To take districts is in itself amazing, and to go on to the state championship, and to compete and win at that, like some of you have, is really amazing. And I think that that needs some recognition. So first, let's go to the coaches, who have really carried the team through thick and thin. Coach Eddie Joe Abeta. Coach Eric Griegego. Coach Gilbert Valerio. Coach Dan Veroni. Oh, okay. Coach Robert Valencia. And now on to the players. Ramon Marmol. This is a state champion right here, too. Emilio Medina. Marshall Cummings isn't here. Abdiel Galindo. Mateo Trujillo. David Ayella. Kevin McCarty. Ian Henderson. Jasiel Galindo. Brandon B. Hill. Damian Martinez. Cade Kennedy. Cristoval Valerio. Diego Valerio. Congratulations to all of you. You've worked very hard this year, and you deserve the recognition that you're getting. Thank you very much.
Tigers, smile, go Tigers!
Again, I'd just like to thank the coaches, the families of these young men. You know, these are our leaders of tomorrow. If I was just five years younger, I'd say we could have a fundraiser, or we could have a takedown. But I'm not five years younger, so... So thanks again. So we'll go on to citizens forum. Citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for five minutes. No action will be taken. I think the, we have three people on our list. Paul Figuera?
Figaro.
Figueroa, I'm sorry.
Figueroa. Figueroa's Italian.
In the old country. Yes, sir, please. Thank you for being here. I'm sorry for the pronunciation.
Oh, that's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and introduce myself to new council members and new staff. I'm Paul Figueroa. I'm here tonight as the Vice President of the Taos Arts Council. We're a relatively new organization. We are a nonprofit organization, but that does not in any way reflect our business plan. I thought that was a joke. Get some response from you. My goodness. We like to see ourselves as a clearinghouse for arts organizations and information in Taos County in northern New Mexico, and as a spokes organization for so many of those arts organizations and artists in our community. If I might hand you out our business cards. We received a grant from New Mexico Arts this year to begin our first year of operation. And one of our efforts is directed towards ensuring that there's art in public spaces. And it's been my pleasure to work with a number of arts organizations in the town and in the county to organize and present the visual arts exhibitions at Town Hall. The current show features a wonderful business of Taos County, one that was located in downtown Taos, weaving southwest. And I encourage you, if you haven't taken a moment to look at the exhibit, to do so this week, because unfortunately, it will be deinstalled Friday morning in anticipation of the next show, which is one that is going to focus on emerging artists in Taos. For the upcoming show. Taos enjoys a national identity that's connected very strongly to the arts, and it's wonderful to be a resident of the town and the county, and to work to ensure that that identity continues to be strengthened nationally. And that's really all I wanted to say tonight, so I look forward to seeing some of you in the hallways at Town Hall. I do wanna conclude by saying that I've always encountered staff at Town Hall that have been very supportive of the Arts Council and the shows that are going up there, and I know the council members, past and present, will likewise appreciate seeing art in that wonderful space. And I also wanna give a shout-out before ending today to your facilities director and that whole department. I understand they were the Department of the Year in the town summary this past year, and I had the pleasure of working with Steve and many during the past year, and so know it's a very worthwhile designation for them, and look forward to working with them and improving the space at Town Hall for hanging art shows. Thank you.
Counselor?
Mayor, if I could, Paul, I'd like to thank you very much for the current show. It's a wonderful, wonderful weaving exhibit, and I'm looking forward to the next one coming up.
It'll be very different, 180 degrees different.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor?
Paul, I too wanna thank you. The one thing I've always encountered when I've gone into Town Hall are individuals, tourists from the area that are visiting, and to me, that's a huge thing because not only are they coming to look at the art, but it's kinda unique that in small towns, you get to interact one-on-one with the elected body, and many of them, you know, just coming through Town Hall and seeing them and saying, what a wonderful place to have an art show. And so, thank you for all the efforts you put forth. Every single one has been well worth it, and I think my favorite was the outdoor landscape. They've all been good, so thank you.
Watch out, we might have you curate a show.
Counselor?
Oh, I also wanted to say thank you. I look forward to going into Town Hall, whether it's to pay my water bill or just on business these days, but I do take my time to look at everything thoroughly, and I've really enjoyed what I've seen over the last couple of years, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmen.
Thank you again, appreciate it. So, Mr. Rich Nichols, did you wish to speak tonight? You were on the list.
I guess I really wanna reiterate my desire and plan to have the blood drive returned to Holy Cross Hospital, and I don't know if you were the folks to address that, too, but I think the hospital affords us the great facilities for doing exactly that, drawing blood. And it's wholly supported by Peter, the CEO, and all the staff there, so I would hope that somewhere along the line, the word gets out to the politics to be, please bring it back to Holy Cross Hospital.
And Mr. Nichols, when you brought it up last time, when, at the blood drive, I did ask the young woman that was there about how it got moved here, and basically, they applied to the blood drive, and they brought it here. I guess another one can be held at the hospital. So I, you know, again, it's not that we wanted to bring it here from the hospital. That's what I understand from that young lady. So yes, I agree that the hospital would be a wonderful place to have it, but I guess it would, I don't know exactly how it got moved here, but just that the town applied or asked, and that's the way it was brought here, not that there was any intended to take it from the hospital and bring it here. I think there can actually be two in the community, so, or one, if that's, but we will look into it, and I'll have Mr. Bellis find out exactly how.
I don't know if I quite buy into that.
Yeah.
But that's what you're being told, and that's what you're being told.
Okay. I did, I did ask her, because I knew you had brought it up, and I asked her, and she said, but, we will have Mr. Bellis look at it, and, okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Jeff Northrup, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me, and I think that blood drive was moved because of political considerations, and I gave blood at the hospital several times, and gave it across the street one day last year, but when I was called this year, I initially said yes. It was just a week or two ago. I initially said yes, and then I got to thinking about it, and I said no, and I think it belongs back at the hospital as well, for what that's worth. Now my little humble presentation. The Taos News in questioning the hiring of Rick Bellis and Jacob Caldwell is unwilling to recognize the will of the voters. The Taos News candidates lost, and it's obviously sour grapes on their part. But I've encouraged the Taos News for many years to become a watchdog for the people, not a toady for their political favorites and advertisers. Maybe this has finally happened, and while they might be unfair to you guys, I think they will be aggressive, and that's what I'm looking for. Kathy Conley was the town public relations tout for several years until she left two years ago. Kathy had about 1,500 people on her email list. Though she sugarcoated the indiscretions of Darren and Bobby as a town employee, you can hardly expect anything different than that, it was still a wonderful outlet for town news and events. I encourage her return to town-produced internet information source. This would not be a full-time position. Possibly, this person could also act as an ombudsman, being a go-between between Town Hall and disgruntled citizens. Taos luckily, for the most part, is Taos. I've observed the funkiness, even tastelessness, of Paseo South, Paseo North for over 40 years. In fact, over the last six years, I've done more than anyone to add to this eyesore. I suggest, I suggest that the town create a full-time employee position to work with property owners and merchants along this five-mile stretch to voluntarily clean up and enhance the look of their property. Maybe a local hardware store and some contractors can provide goods and services at a discounted price. The town employee surely needs a weed whacker, plenty of trash bags, and a friendly, pleasant, helpful attitude. Even some safety issues can be addressed, such as painting curbs and medians that cannot be seen at night, but are easy to crash into while looking for a driveway. Finally, I suggested hiring two new employees, but the town needs to assess the value and needs of the 75 employees it has now. In 2009, the town employed 230 people, but lost those 55 jobs through ordinary turnover without firing anyone by 2011. Those reductions were prompted strictly by economic considerations, not efficiency. I claim that a town of just over 5,000 inhabitants in five square miles is still overstaffed with 175 employees. Surely combining positions with the county will help, but experts can be hired to assess each department, pointing out inefficiency and overstaffing. By natural and normal attrition, I'm guessing we can easily lose another 25 positions, saving possibly $800,000 a year. Any questions?
Questions? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Item number two, Mr. Northrup, I didn't quite catch that. You're suggesting a Paseo del Pueblo Sur and Norte cleanup crew, could you?
Yeah, well, I think one person could handle that five-mile stretch, 10 miles, if you consider each street has two sides, and really make it much more presentable to the visitors and population as a whole. It generally looks pretty trashy with properties that aren't kept up well, and litter everywhere.
And would this be a town Taos employee? Did I hear you say volunteers or something?
No, I was suggesting that it would be a town employee to do this, and maybe some leaning on local merchants or local providers, like hardware stores, paint stores, contractors, could make it a little easier for the merchants to spend some money on their property, to make it look a little better.
And then, Jeff, how did you get to that 25 employees equalling $800,000? What was your arithmetic there?
Well, that would work out to $32,000 per employee, roughly $16 an hour, but if employees being paid, let's say $11 or $12, let's say $12 an hour, ordinarily, you can figure whatever they're being paid is their gross pay, you can add 40% to that for other costs to the town to employ them. So if they're making $12 an hour, four times 12 is 480, say $5, so $12, $12 plus $5 is $17 an hour, is what it costs to keep a $12 an hour employee on the payroll, and I'm guessing most employees make substantially more than $12 an hour gross pay.
Thank you, sir.
So $800,000 seems pretty reasonable.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we'll go on to item nine. Oh, is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak? Please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I am here, my name's Ellen Archuleta, and actually, a couple things on issue, and I thought this, at least to bring them up in the public forum. I have dealt, I'd say, the last six and a half years with issues with the Planning and Zoning Commission, so one of the things I'm looking forward to with the new administration is to try and to resurrect neighborhood associations in the city and county, countywide especially, where we can bring up issues, because we seem to have more cohesiveness when, you know, something that is in dire need of, what do you call it, attention, really gets people to come together, and I don't wanna be in that situation. So one of them in the town of Taos has to do with certain ordinances that are really not up to certain levels, and I, I thought I would propose to the manager certain areas where I see things are out of compliance, and one, for example, is, I'm trying to think what it's called, a hoarder type of mentality, where some people in the city limits will have tons of vehicles. I will note, on the street which I live, Dolan Street at the corner, there is this Rat Pack mentality next to one of my neighbors that's been there for as long as I can remember, since I was a child. I think Judy and I grew up in that neighborhood, so we're just used to seeing this eyesore. But in Santa Fe, they had, 2009, I read in the Santa Fe, New Mexico, and there was a fire, not downtown, it was between the, I can't remember, ran parallel to Surrios, and it was in a residential area. So whatever they did, it's an ordinance that we could modify to bring it up to code in our city limits, where that people don't have more than a couple of vehicles that don't run, or at least, you know, not stockpile them, because not only that, but you start to have feral cats, you start to have vehicles that might have oil or gasoline in there that could, if they, you know, were to catch fire, you have it going to the whole residential section, and because of this, it's a fire hazard. So, you know, it might be something that maybe the county looks at in, you know, in terms of, you know, cutting your weeds and that sort of thing, which I think they did back in 2005 or '06. I remember some sort of, you know, information because of the fire up at the Pueblo area in 2004. But it's something we need to look at doing. And so anyway, I thought if we can, you know, I'm going to try to get with the county and get a list of the neighborhood associations. I worked on this with Georgia Page back in 2005 or '06, and it's something that's, you know, we really need to do, but it helps us to know what neighborhoods are having issues, and it's easier to come to a forum and say, these are the issues we're having in XYZ neighborhood associations, we're also seeing it in the county, et cetera. I just see it as more of a cooperative spirit between the constituents, property owners, businesses in town, and residents, and the council manager and mayor at large. So I'm just going to try to initiate that and hopefully get some other people to kinda join me in helping to revive it. The next thing I am planning to do is speak with the, both the city and manager and attorney in regard to proposing a wellness program for all the employees, and it's something that, an RFP obviously would have to be written up, but I tried to do this for the last two administrations and never got very far. I've seen this from corporate America since 1995, mostly on the east coast, west coast, and it's something that would be an incentive for lowering overall the insurance premium for the employees. And that's basically the big projection that I see, coming from a financial background, and also having been a wellness consultant for many years. There's a great way to implement this, where there's information available, reduced rates for, you know, anything from yoga classes, tai chi, to lower blood pressure, for example, those who are dealing with, you know, various health issues. It's just a great way to, as a team, in other words, people or individuals in general are more able to work on their own personal health goals in a work environment than they are at large on their own, because we tend to, after three months, drop the ball, and in a work environment, you have that, what do you call it, more collaboration, because your peers and colleagues are also in different stages. So I will be proposing this shortly. And from this, I've also been working on getting feedback from the community of practitioners and specialists in different modalities of alternative health that either have products or services. or services that if we unite on working on, maybe reducing some of our fees so that we have something to offer local residents, just, you know, slightly under. It's better to have more of a piece of the pie than, you know, to market individually and you have less in terms of resources. So that's what I'm looking at doing. Now, one thing I do want to just, as I finish off, Jeff Northrup brought up a couple of issues that I think that could be looked at on another focus. I'm going to meet with Judge Chavez, which I spoke to him briefly, about trying to start like a pilot project with his municipal court where we could have potential internships from the high school and some U and M students that, looking at going into and studying municipalities and working in the legal system, and also maybe a cooperative way to sentence people instead of paying a fine, but maybe community service and that trash pickup. I mean, I think if I was going to, going to have the option of paying a hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar speeding ticket, you know, just as illustration, I think getting the fresh air and picking up trash might be a lot more advantageous. You see your neighbors and fellow businesspeople, and it might be something that would, you know, bring a more collaborative efforts to the city in terms of what things that we can do, whether in our parks, but he was very interested in that, and so we're planning to meet and see what we can do. I'm trying right now to pull data from different communities around the country. So in other words, we're not creating, creating anything, we're just looking at things that work in other communities that we could probably utilize here. So that's all I wanted to state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor, did you have?
Thank you, Ms. Archuleta. I do have a few comments. The last few months, I have been approached by a number of Taos seños who would like us, in time, once we all catch our breath, to look into neighborhood associations. This is at their request, so at some point, I think we will look into that.
Great.
We, we need to catch our breath. Wellness program for employees, I, I don't have the woman's card with me, but there's a woman named Leila Yoga, who I think talked to the previous manager about wellness and that kind of thing. If you call me at home, Ms. Archuleta, I can give you her number. She would be a valuable member on that team. And then I have another contact for you, and that's Mr. Greg Peace, who set up a community corrections program up in Alaska and is pretty much in tune with Mr. Northrup's idea, so if you give me a call at the house, I can get you those numbers.
Great.
And that will enable you, empower you to talk to Mr. Bellis and actually have perhaps some reasonable teammates and alternatives.
Yes, I, I certainly do appreciate that, and there's a few other people in the community who've mentioned about, you know, the collectiveness of, you know, offsetting just fines in the municipal, I mean, it could be at the magistrate court level too, but I'm just seeing, when you go into Judge Chavez's court, I, I just see that, you know, getting a fine and, and actually having to do community service is more empowering about what actually happened, and I think especially with younger individuals from, you know, fifteen to twenty-eight, they're more apt to take that seriously and not continue to, you know, parking tickets or whatever. I, I agree. And in terms of Ms. Leila Becker, yes, she's actually been one of the people instrumental in me trying to kind of start a formulation for a collaborative group of alternative healthcare practitioners, since insurance doesn't really cover unless it's physical therapy, but I do, and I will contact you. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Archuleta, thank you for being here this evening, and you did allude to speaking with Mr. Bellis. I suggest that you continue that.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. So we'll go on to, then, anybody else that would, under the public hearing? Please, John. I mean, under Citizens Forum, excuse me.
Mayor, council members, and youth council member, I, I just wanted to let you guys know that one more of the wrestlers that came in just a few minutes late, Damian Martinez, showed up. So if, if you don't mind, could we take just a moment and, and recognize him also?
Please, thank you.
What was the name again? Sorry. Damian Martinez? Come on up.
Damian, as, as, you know, we alluded to earlier, is that, you know, thank you, thank you for your family, thank you for stepping up to the plate. You guys are, you know, are some of our leaders of tomorrow, and, you know, I know that, I talked about cutting weight earlier, and a lot of you guys cut a lot of weight. I know it's a tough area, you know, you'll be in the most physical shape ever. I always tease, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I always tease, you know, in the Bible, it matches wrestling all the time in the Bible, so I think that's the number one sport, but, because I didn't see anything about golf or any of those, but I'm just teasing, so I think it's the number one sport. So thank you, thank you for being here. So we'll go on to a public hearing. Ordinance fourteen oh six, consideration and possible approval of ordinance fourteen oh six, repealing town of Taos ordinance fourteen oh five, authorizing a lease agreement for five oh one Sunset Drive, Lot H, Chamisa Verde subdivision in its entirety, Mr. Morris Madrid, our HR director. And so I want to go ahead and open this public hearing. Mr. Morris?
Mayor and Council, this should be a very simple item. This is the final step in the housekeeping of our ordinances and resolutions. At the last meeting, you did pass the resolution that changed the purpose for the use of that house. This final step repeals the original ordinance that was specifically dedicated to lease that house to the police chief. This repeals and deadens that ordinance. It's, it's really that simple.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, you can do that on the next ordinance, put the repealer of the old ordinance on, tie it on to, to that ordinance, we don't have to do it twice.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, Counsel.
When we did the ordinance last time to change the purpose of the ordinance, you can take and put a repealer at the end of that, of this existing ordinance, so we don't have to do it twice.
Oh, the action that was taken last time was to amend the resolution.
I understand that, but you can take on that and attach the repealer to it, make it as one, one deal, just to cut down on your paperwork.
Thank you, Counsel, I wasn't aware of that.
Any, any other discussion? If not, counsel, motion to, some of you have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion, yes.
Just real quick, Renee, yeah, I was elicited as a mayor pro temp, so if we can get that changed in the ordinance also. Good.
So, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Huntou?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you. So then, we did amend our agenda, so, oh, sorry, it is a public hearing, and I should have before we took the vote, is there anybody that wishes to speak for or against this? We might have to do this again. Sorry about, anybody wish to speak for or against? Jacob, do we have a? So I need to close the public hearing at this point, and then go ahead and move on.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. What I would suggest, Mayor, this is a good practice.
Yes.
Motion, I, I think you can recall the motion, having opened the, having not closed the hearing, but allowed invited public comment, I think the, the best bet would be to recall the motion and vote again.
Mr. Mayor, I recall the motion that we just passed.
Recall the second?
Second. And make it the next order of business.
So, I make it, is there any, no discussion? I hope, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Move to revoke.
He said just yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Huntou?
Yes.
So, counsel, how do we wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, you need to open it, get the public, is there any comment?
Well, is there any comment from the public? It is, and I think I closed it already, so, yeah, no, no comments, so go ahead, counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, no public comment, I move that ordinance fourteen dash six be approved.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Huntou?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you, I guess we'll get our housekeeping done. So then we'll go ahead on to eleven E, which was, we amended our agenda, and matters from the mayor and council, youth council member E, landlocked properties adjacent to the airport, discussion, direction to staff, and possible action regarding several landlocked properties adjacent to Taos Regional Airport. Councilmember Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council and citizens. It's come to my attention over the last few months that there are still properties out adjacent to the airport that are landlocked. I would like, in just a second, to invite those property owners, if they wish to speak, and before they do, this is a simple request for discussion and direction from staff, collaboration with the landowners or representatives of those properties, to discuss perhaps with legal, perhaps with the airport manager and planning and zoning, to ascertain the status of those properties and find a, find consensus and a fair and reasonable solution, and then bring that recommendation back to council, so that we can then look at that proposed and then look at that motion. And that's, that's it.
Okay. Is there somebody in the audience that those properties affect? If you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Sam Martinez, I'm speaking on behalf of the Martinez family heirs to the Patricio Martinez estate, and there, there are properties, as you mentioned, that are landlocked. There are multiple landowners that, you know, we've been addressing this issue for, for years, and there's issues that, when Mr. Pedalta was mayor, that did address certain of the issues that impacted on some of the landowners, but none which addressed the ones that are currently under discussion. And, you know, it's, it's just been kicked on the road for years and years, and the last, well, that property has been landlocked since the initial airport acquisition, and I certainly do welcome your administration to look into it, because I think there's probably, there's different resolutions that I think could be obtained, but just getting a, an easement to the, to the properties, I think that it would benefit the landowners once you get to the first property that is landlocked, that we could each, if the others were agreeable, to grant each other easement across the properties, because, you know, this has been going on for, for a long, long time. And I would certainly be willing to, to give some input to whoever's going to look at it, and at least show them what, what's happened in the past, and, but I think it does merit some, some discussion and study, and I appreciate you looking into it.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Caldwell, did you?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, you know, I'd, I'd be more than happy to look into it. It's, of course, premature, given what I don't know at this point to suggest that anything can be done about it, but certainly, if there's information you could provide, Mr. Martinez, I'd be happy to look into it and plug it into the greater context of how properties were acquired by the town in that area, and whether there may be remedies available to you. It's a complicated issue, I can assure everyone of that, and I'd be happy to be the person that the town assigns to look into that, though.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Toby Martinez, this is my brother, we don't look alike at all. He's a better-looking one. In addition, I have cousins in the back of the room that are adjacent landowners, Eva and Nancy, and I don't know if somebody else came, just the two of you. They're, they're right adjacent to us and also are involved in the same situation. All I'd like to add is that, in addition to what my brother said relative to easements, there had also been discussions of, of the town outright purchasing. For the town, there, there is no landlocked situation. The town can, has access by virtue of having the property that, you know, the runway, the airport property. In addition to that, just recently, there, I've been in some discussions of the possibility of working with federal agencies, including the parts service, the parts service, the Forest Service, and BLM, and potentially them being interested in acquiring property, these properties, because in most cases, these agencies need to be adjacent to an airport as it relates to fighting fires and being able to be, you know, loading air tankers and so forth. There is no other location between here and Albuquerque where they can do that, so I don't know that these agencies would be interested, but that's another potential option that maybe can be discussed and, and work that is done by this committee that would look at this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Martinez, if you would, any additional material that you guys might have, if you would work with Jacob and see if we can't find a resolution. Counsel, any, any comment?
Thank you. My only concern, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Martinez, and welcome. Just that we have firm contact, that you've got Mr. Caldwell's number, and if you could please keep me appraised as to how things are going, and I think you also might find, pending Mr. Bellis's approval, he comes also with a world of background and knowledge. So, does that sound like a reasonable course? Mr. Caldwell?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Hahn, absolutely. I, I think I'm willing to dispense with a lot of that formality, but I, I will need to be able to look at tangible information to the extent you can organize it well, so that I don't have to pour over too much in order to get my bearings. I would really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellis?
Last summer, there were a series of meetings between the county planning department and town plan department in regards to developing collaborative zoning for the airport in anticipation of the expansion and possible future economic development. This was one of the issues that was examined. In addition, as Mr. Martinez, Mr. Toby Martinez has indicated, there was also a joint discussion at the Intergovernmental Council about the possibility of establishing a US Forest Service BLM staging area and hangar in conjunction with the Civil Air Patrol. Unfortunately, it didn't reach the point of being a timely priority to be included in the ICIP for the town or the county, but both are still viable alternatives. Unfortunately, discussions broke down between town and county, but there are a number of options still on the table, and we're aware of your situation, and I think that we can find a resolution to it fairly quickly, considering the time that you've been patient. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go on then to matters from staff, request for waiver for liquor, liquor license application, and consideration and possible conditional approval to grant a waiver to Benino Royball, owner of the Bella LLC, for a beer and wine license application due to the proposed establishment being located within three hundred feet of our Lady of Guadalupe Church. Conditional approval will be subject to the approved application for public hearing process required by the New Mexico Alcohol and Gaming Division. Mr. Bellis?
Before we proceed, if you don't mind, I would like to defer to council- Before we proceed, if you don't mind, I would like to defer to council on this to be sure that we don't violate the public hearing requirements in having what is an informal public hearing at which we give consensus.
Mr. Mayor, also, I, just with regards to that, Mr. Bellis, I, I would also venture to say the same, because we'd be looking for consensus prior to a public hearing, so I would almost defer that we maybe move it to an actual public hearing.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, so, this, this appears, and I was gonna have the town clerk give a, give the council a little bit of an idea of how this came to be, and in terms of being an agenda request, but I'm gonna go ahead and do that for, apparently the Alcohol Gaming Division has taken it upon itself to suggest a sort of new way of deliberating on these waivers, and I'm not sure it's gonna work very well, but the idea apparently is that, and I, I don't think it's a problem, frankly, for the applicant, because there is no formal pending application at this point to describe what she intends to do, but I don't think that there's really any basis to make any decision tonight, because this matter has not been placed before you for that purpose, but, but in any event, the, as I understand it, the Alcohol Gaming Division has suggested to the applicant that she may sort of get a sense from the council about the likelihood of granting a waiver, prior to then going through the full-blown and costly application process. Of course, state statute provides, or not only provides, but requires, that in order to seek such a waiver, and in fact, to seek a license in the first place, there must be a public hearing, and when a council like yours sits for a public hearing, you sit in a quasi-judicial capacity, and as part of that role, you should not have prejudged the matter, and you should not have considered evidence or testimony that was brought before you outside of that context, so it's a little bit of a tricky situation. I certainly appreciate the, the cost involved in going through the application process with Alcohol Gaming, but I'm concerned that until there's a statutory change, there's not a whole lot that this body can do. You know, Mayor, I think you probably do have the discretion, and perhaps after discussion with council, to hear from the applicant, if you wish, I'm not sure it'll be satisfactory to the applicant, though, because I don't think that there's a whole lot you can do in response.
Councillor Pedalta?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would have to agree with council on this, that I think that because we have to sit as a judicial body, when the application would come before us, I think it would be ill-advised of us to discuss this item on the agenda tonight, even with the applicant, because it, it would, in, in the public hearing process, it would jeopardize the judicial process.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I'd, what I'd be happy to do is to speak with the applicant, you know, either after this meeting or sometime later in this week, to explain kind of how that works, and I, I unfortunately wasn't aware of this, or how it came to be, until it was on the agenda and sort of set in stone.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't want to infer by this, this concern that in any way we are not gonna look for efforts to simplify the process and save time and money for applicants for any kind of approval before the town, it's just in this case because there's been a direction by the state, but not a legislative change to guide us in that. I would be concerned that if we were to imply some sort of approval to go ahead, and then you were to find out in the public hearing after the applicant entered it into the process, that there was other information you are not privy to, that there might be liability consequence, and that someone could come back and say, well, I proceeded based on the direction you gave us. So, I would ask, again, I think that the council has offered a good opportunity, which is we can meet with the applicant, explain the law a little clearer, and in the meantime, we can get some further guidance from the state as to how this process can operate under more limited liability to the council.
Okay, so with this heard, did you have additional comment?
Mr. Mayor, I guess the thing is moving forward here, Renee and council, I don't know how we can proceed, I mean, it's, it takes time out of your day to come and, and address this and kind of not have anything moved forward, or at least to your satisfaction. What's the state's, I mean, is there, is there a, like a streamline that they're trying to process through this, I mean, what, what, what's their reasoning?
And, and what will, council, if you, I think we'll let Renee go ahead and do her presentation, and then we'll kind of get a feel for it, and then if, if the direction is to have the applicant meet with staff, we'll, we'll decide that, just give the time to Renee to at least give us a briefing.
And, Mr. Mayor, also, just real quick with that, after she meets with staff, please know that we can schedule a special meeting.
Yes.
For that, so that we don't, you know, have you wait another couple of weeks, okay?
So, Renee, for you.
Okay, Mayor, councilmembers, the way this came about is the, the applicant came into my office last month, we, I think it was last month or the month before, we had another applicant who came into the office requesting the same thing, her business was within three hundred feet of her establishment, her proposed establishment, and because the fee is so high just to submit an application with the Alcohol Gaming Division, they were advised to see if they could get a waiver prior to submitting the application, just to get a feel, like you, like you mentioned, as to the direction the council may go. The last time that you approved, or the governing body approved this, I don't remember if it was last month or the month before, we made it clear to the applicant that the approval was only conditional, so, once the, the mayor and council, I mean, I didn't even submit anything to the Alcohol Gaming Division, letting them know that it was a conditional approval, but they do know that when they come back after the preliminary approval from the Alcohol Gaming Division, you still need to go through a public hearing process, and at that point, you need to hear from the public, you know, as to whether there's any support or opposition on this license, and at that point, you can, you know, make your final determination as to whether you want to give a wa, a waiver. So, I'm really not sure myself why Alcohol Gaming Division is going this route, other than that they want to accommodate the applicant and save them money in case the waiver is not approved. I think that's, that's where we're at right now. And also, I think that this is something, you know, there, there's nothing set in stone, there's nothing, they haven't changed the statutes or anything saying that we have to do this, so I think that in the event that they do, you know, make it a regulation, we'll probably have to change our policy by, by code on how we're going to deal with this in the future, just to make it consistent with all the applicants.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, in, in being very proactive personally and wanting business to develop, I also believe that we would not be doing the applicant a favor if they were to proceed and then, in entering into a process that there's no formal basis for, it makes that action subject to a legal challenge, and that adds to more cost and delay to both her and the town.
So, so I guess with that said, we'll, Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Bellis, if you'll work with the applicant and see if we can bring this back for a public hearing, if we need a special meeting, if we can get that special meeting put on the calendar. I hate to tire up, and, you know, I, I know business in our community is important, and, councillor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, Jacob, is there a possibility of doing a pre-application public hearing?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, not in my opinion, the, the statute reads that upon conditional approval of a beer and wine license, in this case, application, the local governing body shall conduct a public hearing. So, those things go together, and right now, we don't have conditional approval from Alcohol Gaming. Conditional approval, incidentally, means something much more than just a verbal suggestion that you might get a license, it means having submitted a full-blown application and gone through all the finding requirements of a hearing officer at Alcohol Gaming, so, so, councillor Pedalta, no, in my opinion, that is not an option.
Okay, so then, so what you're saying is that until a conditional approval is granted, the public hearing can't take place, so you can't do the public hearing first before the conditional?
That's correct, councillor Pedalta.
So, again, if you'll work with the two entities, and hopefully we can get something done, okay? Thank you, appreciate it, thank you for being here tonight. So, go on to item B, twenty twelve New Mexico State Library General Obligation Bond Grant, consideration possible approval and acceptance of the twenty twelve general obligation bond grant from New Mexico State Library in the amount of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. Ms. Shirley Fernandez, our library director? Shirley, is there any possibility we can get a one in front of that thirty-one? No?
I would only hope. This is the general obligation bond that was voted by the constituents of the state of New Mexico in twenty twelve. It was approved, and they are getting ready to disperse funds, and this is just a formality that needs to be approved by council before the town can go into the contract portion. I need a signature for me to send back to the state library. Once that is accomplished, then they will start giving us the funds, which probably won't happen till like November of this year.
And Shirley?
And again, in November, we'll be going up for, vote again for the twenty fourteen bond, which we hope everybody will approve.
Is there any match required?
No, no match.
Okay, but we probably will have to have a BAR, or?
If it's gonna be for next fiscal year, it'll include it in the budget.
Okay. Councillor? Questions, if not?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Huntou? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
And, in our training this last Saturday, one of the requests from the, in the training we went to, is that they asked us to get as many roll call votes as we possibly can versus a yay, you know, minor things like, you know, roll, roll calls and minor things, they suggested that we do it the other way, but as many roll call votes as we possibly can, so just so you know that why we're, why we're moving in that direction.
I agree.
So, so we'll go to the San Juan, item C, thank you. Appreciate it. Again, I wish we could have got that one in front of the thirty-one, it would have, you know, it would really.
Would have been nice.
Yes, so, again, we'll go on to item C, San Juan Project Repayment Contract Number Fourteen WC forty-five thirty-two, consideration possible approval of contract number fourteen WC forty-five thirty-two for the San Juan Chama Project Repayment Contract between the Town of Taos, the United States of America, Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation to lease the use of its twenty fourteen San Juan Chama Project Water Allocation up to seven hundred and sixty-six acre feet. Abigail, I believe this is your item, or is it, Mr. Caldwell?
Thank you, Mayor, am I on? Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Once again, I should apologize upfront that I might need to defer to various members of the council, perhaps, for a little help on this one, to the extent they're willing to, but my understanding is that this has become a recurring contract for the last three years at least, and it is a result of the Town of Taos acquiring, as a result of the, its offset requirements under the Abeta settlement, which is still pending, nonetheless, the town has acquired in two allotments, a total of seven hundred and sixty-six acre feet of water rights from the San Juan Chama Diversion Project that the town is currently not using, and the, the purpose of this agreement is to allow the Bureau of Reclamation to utilize those water rights in their obligations under the Endangered Species Act to maintain a consistent stream flow for the silvery minnow. My level of sophistication in that regard is probably about maxed out there, I certainly can attest that this contract was agreed to as deformed by my predecessor, and has been agreed to in substantially the same form as it is presented today for the last three years at least.
Councillor Pedalta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, you're partially correct. It's not the silvery minnow, it's other uses of the water, and it allows the Bureau of Reclamation then to lease this water to other users downstream from us, and much of it has gone actually down to Texas over the years, but since we're not using it, and to keep the water in, in use, we have continually leased these acre feet. Now, the original, there's four hundred acre feet that was in the San Juan Chama, the other is older, and we have been doing this since I've been mayor, and prior to that in ninety-four, so, it's been twenty years that we've been leasing this water rights, because we don't have a need for them currently, and so to keep them in use and allow other people downstream to have water, we, we do lease them to the Bureau of Reclamation.
And the, I guess the objective is to keep water in the river and, and help recharge part of that aquifer in that area, and, and do we actually, is there actually an exchange of money, or is just, or, you know, I know they only use it in the event there was not enough water, but is?
It's, it's a small amount of money.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yes, I, I believe in a year like this year, there's a great deal of certainty that they will use some of these waters, of course, there are, in fact, less waters available because of the current height of the Heron Dam, so there is a, there is an exchange of monies, what, what happens is the town is sent through the finance department, a breakdown of the amount of water used, and in turn, the town sends an invoice to Bureau of Reclamation for payment on those invoices, and it, I think traditionally has been sufficient to meet the town's requirements for operations and maintenance under its obligations, and then a little more. I know those aren't precise terms, but it's not a, this is not a big moneymaker for the town, but it allows it to continue its obligations under the, under the agreement for San Juan Chama Waters.
It's an offset, basically, Mr. Mayor and council, that we don't have to take from our operating budget to pay for the requirements, as they, as Jacob has indicated.
And it boils down to, Mr. Mayor, about fifty dollars an acre foot, if they were to utilize the entire seven hundred and sixty-six.
But again, you know, it's basically keeping our water rights intact, so, because now they're saying either use them or lose them, and that makes that we are using them, so, councillor, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, on that note, with regards, and I'm glad this issue came up, because it's an issue we probably all should be looking at, especially councillor Han, who's extremely passionate about the yosecias as well, which is to, at, at the very least, get our constituency base both here within the city and the county knowledgeable about the, the water legislation that's passing through the state, which is a use or lose, and I have asked and encouraged our state engineer's office to at least enact some type of water banking mechanism where, if you're not utilizing it, make it back to the city, bank it back to the state, but so that they don't altogether lose it, and I think now's the perfect time, because as we face tighter and tighter water restrictions, tighter and tighter drought conditions, that other states further down south are gonna start looking for our resources, and I think that's one of the reasons the Abeta adjudication is such a huge movement for our brothers and sisters to the north of us at the pueblo, so just keep that in the back of, of our, our minds.
Councillor Pedalta?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilman Gonzalez, we, you can actually bank your water rights in two places, one is with the municipality, or you can bank them in the yoseca, so you don't lose them, use them or lose them, and we passed that legislation back when I was in the, in the legislature, because that was one of the areas that we were most concerned about, however, there is a provision in there that we talked about during the election, and I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, but there was a, a change that needed to be not so much in the yosecias, but needed to be in land use for agriculture, where if you don't use it for three years, it's, it's feral, then you, you'd lose your.
Your status.
Your status in your, in your property taxes, and that needs to be changed, because as long as you don't change the use of that land, whether it's being. as long as you don't change the use of that land, whether it's being actually used or not, it should stay as agricultural land, and we need to get that fixed in the legislature because that goes right along with the water rights. Because if you're in a drought situation and you can't get water on your land, and you can't run cattle, or you can't run sheep, or whatever it is, it shouldn't be to your detriment. So we need to work with our legislature to get that provision changed so that people can maintain their agricultural land until such time as they actually do change it by use.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything else on this item? If not, how do we wish to move?
Move for approval.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Okay, we'll go on to item D, Financial Update, Presentation of the Monthly Financial Report for the period ending February 2014. Mrs. Fambro, our finance director, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, I am Councilmember and manager. You have the report in front of you, I'll just go, just a summary for the newer elected officials. The first page is just a general summary of revenues, expenditures, capital projects, and debt service. The second page is just a summary in numbers for the general fund, which is the biggest operating fund. Third page is just a revenue expenditure graph, and the last page is a, just a summary of all the special and enterprise funds. I added July's report for you, just for reference, in the same format, and then the last two pages is just a summary of grocery receipts tax to date, and the last page is a classification. So I just added those information so that you would have something to look at since this is your first monthly report as a new council and mayor. So just going into the report in the general fund, we talk mainly about grocery receipts tax on our revenues. February's taxes were up 9.88% over last fiscal year at this time, and when I talk about the categorical increases, the main was in, was in construction, and that was at an increase of 41,222.
Mayor, for the... For the council, the numbers for February are actually the revenues of December, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're always two months behind in what's reported to us from the state. So when you look at those numbers, it's actually the activity of December, not February.
Yes, sir. And on the classification, you can see I do put that as what activity it is shown, but you're out, thank you.
Marietta, how much of that is, I guess, because of the affordable housing developments that we're here, I mean, that's gonna go away because they're wrapping up? So are we adjusting based on?
On that one, I'd probably have to check with planning to see the offset of that. I don't know if those revenues, when they were recorded, but I can double check, but we've also had increases of building permits, so we're also seeing that revenue increase.
This would be the first month, I think, that we saw increase in construction, right? First or second?
I think we've had a couple of months, a couple of months. So this was December's activity, like you said, so maybe the majority of that housing was in that timeframe.
Okay.
I understand now what you said.
Thank you.
Counselor?
To answer his question, where is the breakdown by category for the grocery receipts?
It's in the, it's the last page of the report there.
Okay, so if you looked at that, if you look under construction, you should see whether or not there's a...
Well, it would be in GRT though, it wouldn't be on permit, right?
No, no, I'm just saying is if you're talking about the housing project?
Yeah.
If that was affecting GRT during December?
December, yes.
So construction GRT was up substantially?
Yes, from 40, from 6,300 to 47,000. So yes, sure, that is the grocery receipts tax amount for construction that was done in December.
Right.
Okay. And that's pretty much how the whole classification summary works. And then also just decreases along the way too, and, and the main decrease was in professional, scientific, and technical services. So overall, year-to-date growth, we're at 4.82% through February. We've projected to be at 1.8% through the end of the fiscal year, and we're staying with that projection currently at this time. We did receive March's grocery receipts tax, and that was slightly down, so that would mean for January's activity, and that will be reported next month, but I usually try to give you a heads up since we've already received that. On the expenditure side, right now, we're just running with our mid-year budget adjustment figures, so we are just using those as a projection right now, and we're pretty much about 1.8% higher than what the anticipated, anticipated budget was. Things happen, some people spend a lot more at the beginning, in the middle, so by the end of the year, we, actually at the end of this third quarter, I'm gonna ask for the departments to give me a final projection from their budgets so that we have two figures closer to the end of the fiscal year. Ending balance, we still have 1.4 million, we're up to 50 days of our reserve in general fund. Capital projects, one of the biggest expenditures that is happening now is the airport, obviously. We've spent 752,000 this last month in February, and that was for 90% of the final design of the airport runway project. And another project going on is Bertha Street Improvements, we paid out some funds on that to bring us up to 100% complete on the design for Bertha Road Improvements, and we should be looking at getting that bid out here in the next three weeks or so, month, I'll say. Debt service, you can just see a summary of our debt service. Town, townwide, we have 14.2 million dollars of debt, and principal payments of 1 million for the year and 453. Nothing is due quite yet in the next 30 days, so you'll see that activity more in May and in April. So that's just a summary of, of the activity going on, mainly in general fund, capital projects and so. The second page, if you go next, is just really the numbers, and how we have this laid out for you is, the approved budget is the first column, we have actual year-to-dates from last fiscal year for comparison, and our current 2013-14 year-to-date actual figures. And then what we have done is have, we already have a projection for the end of the fiscal year. The reason I gave you July's report is because you can see the original budget in July's report on the first column, but for now, we've already, the approved budget is the original budget plus any budget adjustments throughout the year, which included our mid-year adjustments. So just on the revenues and general fund, right now, we're at 7.3 million dollars. We've done one temporary loan transfer out to the historic fund, and our total expenditures year-to-date is 6.3 million dollars. So I'll just take a break, and if you have any questions on the general fund?
Counsel?
Our next, Mr. Mayor, if I could, our next bond maturity is 2016?
2017.
2017.
2017.
What is that on?
That is the 20 acres. Whatever, it's the, yeah, it's the 20 acres gravel pit.
Gravel pit?
Yes, I don't know what.
Thank you.
Anything else from counsel, staff?
Thank you, Marietta.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Marietta.
Okay, we'll go on to item E, Date for Joint Town/County Meeting Discussion Regarding Date for Joint Town/County Meeting and Potential Matters to Be Discussed, Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am circulating what is just a, not fraction, but just some recommended items that are issues, we don't have positions on these, just that they're items that involve both the town and the county, and discussed briefly with the county manager who agreed that these were topics that might be subject for discussion. I just wanted to get your input before setting an agenda. There might be items you don't want to discuss, some that I may have overlooked that you want included on there, and if there are any that you need additional information on. The recommended date would be Tuesday, April 8th, and so that it doesn't conflict with other business that both bodies have prior to then. Would also give us the opportunity, if we want a work session of our own prior to that, to be advised by council and staff as to status on any of these issues.
Mr. Mayor, Rick, how much time are you recommending? Because this could be a two-day...
As much as you could possibly give us that day. One of the things we thought might be helpful to initiate this joint meeting is that the economic development element of the comprehensive plan, which had been prepared for the town earlier and has been heard by the Planning Commission, but not by the governing body, one of the things we need to do to be reimbursed for that is have that heard by the governing body. It was done in more than just the activity within the town limits, but took a regional perspective, and it might also be helpful for the county commission to hear that because they are in need of an update on their plan. But it also talks about a lot of these issues that are in here, the airport, annexation, regionalization, intergovernmental cooperation, so it might be an acceptable objective platform from which these other discussions could be launched. We don't expect any action to be taken that day, only for guidance toward policy to be given to the attorneys and managers to then come back to the governing bodies with specific proposals.
Counselor Pedalta?
No, get him first.
Mr. Mayor, the only one that I have a concern about is the dispatch, in the sense that I was hoping that we would get a proposed JPA from the county based upon that last directive that was given to Mr. Malone to clean up the presentation by the staff on that generalized JPA that they presented to the commission, and because then that would give us something to discuss, and if that is available for this meeting, then I think we could discuss it at that point, but without that, I think that it would be difficult to have the discussions on that one because I think that's the important part that we need based upon the give and take we've had so far, we need to have that basically, and there wasn't too much in there that I think that, that we didn't all agree to, it was just a matter that it just needed to be cleaned up and get the proper language so we know what we're actually discussing. Other than that, I don't see anything on here that can't be discussed.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pedalta, Mr. Malone is in fact working on that amongst other issues, and it is, yeah, it is his goal and that of everyone involved in setting this meeting up that there be an agreement available for review based on the suggestions of both parties, and he was awaiting a counterpart, Mr. Caldwell, to participate in that process.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Please.
I was hoping that we would have something that would come to us without our participation on our side, and because I don't want it to get bogged down in discussions as it has before, and so I was hoping that we would get a presentation that was the basic position of the county on this, and then we could respond to that position. But I would also hope that we would get it a few days before the meeting so that we have an opportunity to look at it and, and not for us to discuss, but for us to, each one of the members of the council to have an idea as to what, how they feel about it, and then that they could bring out those feelings in the discussion. And so that's, that's what I was hoping for, I don't want to get back to where we were before, that it goes back and forth between the, the two parties without, because it becomes then too much of a discussion rather than a presentation.
Understood, Councilman Pedalta, Mr. Mayor, and that's why I put this item on the agenda, to get direction from you today.
So if we can, Rick, we can get that, see if we can work with the county and see if we can get that ahead of time, something that we can review and then have some feedback at that meeting. I know that you made comments towards the economic development, I think that might be needed to put on this list too. If it doesn't, you know, there's, there'll be eight items, I don't know that we have enough time, and, you know, so again, I'm gonna leave it that direction up to you because I know that, you know, we're gonna start at nine o'clock, depending on, you know, where we're, where we're gonna have the meeting, and, and we can move forward from there, but I think that's another valuable item that could be. Counselor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to recommend that if we could move some of the more pertinent ones to the top, and I'm talking like item number six, the coming of the Medea Project, which it probably would be who was now to start getting a game plan in place so that the county and city can collaborate together to get that joint CDVG funding, and that way we'll work any kinks out of the process that needs to be done now, and at the same time, address the concerns and issues that, you know, constituents would have, or the respective governing bodies would have as well, which, I mean, that in itself can, can be a lengthy process, so I'd say if we could do this, you know, four separate times and break them down and give each topic some substantial time, instead I'd just try to rush through them and rush to the next one. So I think if we can identify, you know, what's top priority to this governing body, and maybe county can do the same thing, and then we can narrow down a list to say this is, this is what our top priorities are.
Counselor Pedalta?
I just have one final question, your manager, on the planning and, and building, you have extraterritorial zoning, are you suggesting that we put the extraterritorial zoning back in place?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Pedalta, just that under the powers granted to the municipality, there, there is extraterritorial zoning power, and there had been a number of dialogues back and forth as to how the town and the county pursuant to the discussion by Ms. Archuleta, that the county had established a series of neighborhood associations that had zoning already in place, and that rather than the town, when it annexes an area, having to start that process all over, that there can be a smoother transition as growth occurs, and that we should be, per the legislation, cooperating on how that growth occurs. And just to sort of get a nod to both planning departments on being able to come back to you with the process of how that will occur smoothly and cooperatively.
You know, back in the days, there was, you know, the planning, the extraterritorial zoning actually worked fairly well as far as the town is concerned, and, but I don't know what happened around 2005, 2006, when the county and town got together and dissolved it. But it really helps, in particular in cooperation between the two governmental entities, to have that sort of thing because it, it gives a transitional sort of authority to, and I think maybe what you're talking about is a more appropriate way of doing it rather than having the town solely run it, it should be run jointly, but I think it helps to, to work on development and support between the two agents, or two governments, and so I do like that idea of being back on the table.
Counselors, anything else? Rick, I guess you have some work cut out for you, get, let's see, it looks like 10 items, so...
And we kept that list short, there were a few.
Okay, and so hopefully we can get some of these, you know, taken care of, there's a few on here, it seems like there's an easy solution, other ones will take a lengthy solution, but again, working together, I think, is our best alternative, so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to propose possibly two dates to be considered, and based upon information being gathered by staff, that we either look at the April the 8th or April the 10th. And in order to meet the requirements for publication, you've got, what, about a week to, to come to information, or even if you would like to move it to the next Tuesday, but I think if you want to look at two dates within that week.
Just in case there's not enough time in one day, we can...
Absolutely.
Well, we have, currently, what I have on our calendar is the 8th scheduled for our regular council meetings, so I don't know if we want to dedicate a whole morning to county and then a whole evening to, to city, on how that...
Or move it to the 8th, I mean, to the 10th?
I'll bring that back to the county.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I approve, pending approval by the county, that the joint meeting be on April the 10th.
Then a formal motion, counsel?
Yes. Yes.
Second to that. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go on to item 11, matters from mayor and council youth, council members. I just want at this time just to, you know, I don't know if anybody got an opportunity to go to the Taos Short Film Fest. I think it was a great opportunity in our community. There was a number of, I saw a number of people there. I think it brought a lot of people together and it was a great opportunity for us to view some of those films. There was a great one on the Aseca's. I think they're willing to share that with us and I think it's a great opportunity for us to view some of those. So I just, I just thank them for putting this together. I think this is, I don't know how many times they've done it, but it's, I think, it was, it was great, so again, thank you. But we'll go on to item A, appointment to Taos County Economic Development Corporation Board, consideration possible appointment of a governing body member to serve on the Taos County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Councilor Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow counselors, councilwoman. As a counselor, I would like to briefly discuss what is expected of our appointments to these different boards. I'm wondering what kind of authority one of our representatives has, what are the boundaries around that? And I'm not sure where to go with that question. To you, Mr. Caldwell or Mr. Bones?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real briefly, Councilor Hahn, any board of director that you sit in that be at nonprofit or board that manages funds or money would pretty much be the same executive powers that you have here within this council but with direction to that board of directors or to that organization. I know just in the various boards that I've sat on, flags being raised from the attorney general's offices to really understand the board that you're becoming involved with with regards to finances and how the board operates, monthly meetings, what are the requirements of you yourself, really because of the fact that at the end of the day, it boils down to the overall liability lies within the board of directors themselves. So just brief overview, I think council may be able to give a more broader direction but from, we just, we just did a board of directors training with Help New Mexico, one of the board of directors positions that I sit on, and it was extremely stressed by the AG's office just to make sure, you know, the capacity that you're about to serve in and the undertaking that you will, you will take.
Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Councilmember Hahn, the different appointments here have different authorities. In some cases, sitting on the board, you have authority, fiscal authority over that organization. In other cases, you sit as a member of a board that is, as a representative of the public body and you report back to the public body, but you don't have authority to make decisions other than recommendations to the, to the public body. So it depends on, and in some cases, for example, the health, Taos Health Study Committee is just an advisory committee looking at health systems throughout the county. And all you do is have discussions and try to air situations and help, but that's all it does. So it depends on the appointments. For example, the Taos Economic Development Board, that is a fiscal responsibility that you have sitting on that board and the town has a position on that as well as the county as part of their bylaws. So I guess, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta and Gonzalez. I guess my concern is that the council and mayor be informed of the work that is going on in these different committees. So as I look at the regional landfill board position we're going to appoint shortly and the intergovernmental council, the hospital board and so on, I'm looking for checks and balances and council awareness of what's going on with each of those entities. Does that make sense? Yeah? So how do we do that? How do we ensure the public that their voice is going to be heard? Do we report to each other in a council meeting? Can we do that during a work study?
And Councilor?
Or you could do it in a regular meeting?
Just under matters from mayor and council, it's usually boards that I sit on, council members, that's where I'll address items or discussions that have been brought up to the board of directors, be it economic development, health advising, you know, whatever it is. For example, the Help New Mexico Board of Directors that I sit on is an entity that is statewide but resides within Taos that helps the most disadvantaged folks of our community, either through utility reimbursement or subsidization of some type. And so when there's any major changes that are usually happening, that's where I'll bring it to council. I mean, not in a sense that council can really enact anything on it or do anything with it, but just as more as an informative process to the community so they're aware as to what's happening. But I think it would be probably a good thing that you, just during our regular meetings, if you've had a board of directors meeting that week, to bring it up under matters from mayor and council, just to brief the board.
Mr.? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So I'm wondering if we as a council can just establish that pattern when we sit on a board to be sure and give a, a report on the work that that board, the IGC or whatever it may be, to the council so that we're all aware. Yeah, that's, I'm just looking for the process there.
Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilman Hahn, you're going to find, having been assigned by the county to attend many of these, that there are going to be months where you're really not going to have much to report. But what I would suggest is that for the benefit of the council members as well as the public, what we can do is some of these sites have, some of these organizations have a website and some don't, but we could, on our website, post either the minutes, if in the case of the IGC and the landfill, they don't have their own website, or we can post a link to their minutes and separate those tabs so that all the committees that you as elected officials represent, the citizens on, the citizen could go to that part of our website and read what your votes, your activities and what went on.
And Counselor, just so you know, that these, these meetings are open to the public and they are posted. They run under the same rules that we run. They have to have so many days posted before they can have a meeting. So they are open and open to the public so that people can attend them if they wish also.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one last thing, Counselor. Hahn, the one thing I recommend and it's a practice that's been undertaken by the regional coalition of landhold communities that I sit on as well, is for the executive director to brief each respective governing body. In that case, it's the eight northern counties that they, that they brief. But in their executive director's scope of work, they are tasked at least once a year to come to each respective governing body and relay the work that's been happening throughout the year. So I think that may be a good practice as well, especially in situations where the town either participates either with in-kind services or in some type of financial contribution.
There's another solution too. We can, as a council, put on the agenda reports from the members of these boards, a monthly report, if they meet monthly, to the council. So in a public meeting such as tonight, we could have a report as to what was taking place and if they had nothing to report, they could say, we have nothing to report this month, whatever, but it would be on the agenda for, for the public to know that reports are coming back from these committees that we sit on. And then, thank you, Councilman Peralta. I think that's a reasonable solution. And then if council members have an issue with something that's going on, I'm going to presume we can bring it up at that time and that we'll still have the flexibility to change course. So for instance, if I'm appointed to the landfill board tonight, I know nothing about landfills. I got news for it. And y'all may see me making a grave mistake and I do not want to do that. So I may commit to a course of action or at least verbally in that meeting, but in my report back to the council, you may see that I'm off, I'm off base. So we need to have recourse. Makes sense?
And we do have usually alternates and sometimes we have staff attend also. I know that there'll be a number of staff members, especially in the, in the regional landfill board and IGC, that there'll be staff and it's, you know, it's very reductive. You would be the voting, whoever is the member would be the voting member. But again, you know, there's staff there that would help the process along, so. Okay? So you get your questions answered?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, so move on to the, to the Taos Economic Development Corporation. I think this is a position that has been empty for a little while. So I, I would like to appoint Counselor Kuntu to this position, if you'd accept that.
I absolutely would.
Okay. So I nominate her, I guess, to sit on that. Do we have a second? I don't know if I can nominate, but I can, so I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, with that and seeing that Councilmember Kuntu is willingness to serve, I hereby nominate her to the TOS County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Second. Then we have a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
You okay?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Can she vote for herself?
Yeah.
If you want.
Okay, so go to item B, appointment to the Taos County Intergovernmental Council, consideration possible appointment of a governing body member and an alternate to serve on the Taos County Intergovernmental Council. Council?
Mr. Mayor, do you know what days the IGC meets? Can't remember.
Is it a Wednesday?
I believe it's the third Wednesday of the month. The landfill board meets first at 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 and then 10:30 to noon is the IGC. So it might be efficient to appoint the same member to both of those posts.
To, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, to landfill land?
IGC.
And they normally meet?
Same day, same place.
Tuesdays?
Wednesdays, I believe.
And 9:00 to 12:00?
9:00 to 12:00 for the landfill, yeah, combined.
They're combined. They're usually run an hour apiece, is the way.
Well, I'd like to, if it's appropriate, go ahead and, for the mayor and councils, consideration nominate myself to sit on those two.
Mr. Mayor, just one correction. It's Thursdays.
Thursday, Thursday, 9:00 to 12:00.
Yes.
That stands.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with that. With regards to the IGC, if there's an alternate position, I'd like to sit on the alternate.
There is an alternate on both of those, so.
So maybe I'll just sit as alternate on both in the event that you can't make it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Some.
On the second, call for the vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor and councilmembers, who made the motion?
I did.
And the second?
Councilman Peralta.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So appointment to the Taos Health Study Committee, consideration possible appointment of town delegate and alternate to the Taos Health Study Committee. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint the mayor.
Second.
You've been getting away free tonight.
Okay, all right, I'll do it. Have a, yeah, I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest fair play in that you name as your alternate, Councilman Peralta.
It may be a conflict for me.
Okay. All right.
No, no, in the, in the sense that I'm considering applying for the board of directors of the hospital, so. But there's two positions on there. One has been the member of the council and a staff member. So there, both of those positions are open, so I would recommend the mayor and the town manager.
Okay. Is that a formal motion?
Counselor, my motion.
Second. Do we have a second?
Is that retribution?
Slight.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you, and I think we will do a good job, all of us, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Again, I do sit on the TCDC board also and I do see in the NCRTD board as a chairperson on both of those, so it's not that I have a lack of words. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I guess if I could to, just with the, with the changing of the posts in the governing body, I sit on the regional coalition of landhold communities and just out of openness and transparency that, you know, I've discussed with, with Manager Bellis about being my alternate with regards to that committee. It's, it's an appointed position by myself as an alternate, which does give voting authority in the event that I'm not there, but I haven't missed a meeting yet, so as long as Mr. Bellis will accept, just for this governing body's information, that I would like him to be my, my alternate.
Okay. Jake, it's not on the agenda, so do we need to bring this back in another meeting?
I, Jake, sorry, just real quick, Mr. Mayor, for me, it was just more informative because it doesn't really require a.
Okay. Because I know a lot of these require a letter, that they actually have a letter on file. So in the event that Counselor's not there, they have a letter on files giving him the authority to be the voting member. So I think we need to ratify that in a regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my suggestion would be that I can take a look at the JPA that formed the regional coalition of landhold communities and see if there is such a formality required. And in the event that there's not, then I think that the disclosure that was made tonight is sufficient to allow Rick to act as alternate for the purposes described by Counselor Gonzalez.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it is pretty much by my discretion so I can let the board of directors know as well with the executive director and then Rick would be my alternate in the event that I'm not around.
All right. All right, if we'll move on then, we'll go down, and I guess what we need to do is have staff send letters to the appropriate places so that people know who the member is in the event, that that needs to be on file, if somebody will look at the MOUs or JPAs, whatever they are.
We will do so, Mr. Mayor, and we'll file a copy with clerk and the attorney.
Okay. So we'll go on to personnel matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following executive and public session information items or access items, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the former town attorney and the former town manager. This item may be discussed in closed session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10151H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. Discussion surrounding the former town manager and former town attorney may also invoke Open Meeting Action exemption 10151H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Item two, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the town manager position. This item may be discussed in the open, in closed session under Opening Meeting Act exemption 10151H2, which allows for discussions of limited personnel matters. And item three, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the town attorney position. This item may be discussed in closed session under Open Meeting Act exemption 10151H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. Now, Council, do we have a motion to go into executive? Now, Council, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
We should, Jake, you have any idea of amount of time? Just the people that are here have an idea. Hour, forty-five minutes?
Is it up to me, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I just, you know, a lot of it is...
I would say an hour, at the very least.
Okay. Thank you.
I would hope for less. Mr. Mayor, real quick, before we go, will it be, will there be action taken? I didn't, I closed my agenda.
Yes.
So if we could, for the listening audience, and our cameras at home, could we stay on? I guess we can take a recess, but come back when we come out of executive. I was looking for a meeting today that was off after executive.
I see. Mr. Mayor, counselors, I mean, a couple ways of dealing with that. One is, we could say, somebody will come and give an update after a half hour about whether there's a likelihood of returning within the next half hour, so they're not waiting forever. Would that suffice, Counselor?
I think what he's, what he's discussing is, is having the Channel 22 stay until we're completed.
I see.
Okay. Can we get a nod for Channel 22?
Can we nod?
Okay. We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come out of executive session and into regular session. We have a second also. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Counsel, Caldwell, you want to do a report on what was, what happened in executive session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The record should note that the council went into executive session to discuss items 11F, 1, 2, and 3, pursuant to Opening Meetings Act exemption 10151H2, and 10151H7. The council discussed those items, no decisions were made, no action was taken.
We have a motion to accept the county attorney, um, town attorney's recommendation or, or...
Report, excuse me.
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Counsel, Peralta, Councilman Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion concerning item number one of the executive session, and that is to direct the town attorney and the mayor to work with these items as they are under ordinance 13-9.
Motion, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, after discussion, I make a motion that we offer contract TT14-184A to the town manager, as it is in draft form, in that language corrections be made to this contract, but no monetary items be changed.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Item three?
Mr. Mayor, if I didn't have in my motion, it's, it's an offer to the manager of, of that draft contract. Next, I'd like to, under item three, make an offer of contract TT14-183 with cleanup language to the, a town attorney.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Good night. Oh, and happy birthday, Jake. Sorry we kept you here all night.
It's all right, I'll get home before midnight.